Let's begin down here.
Good evening. I would like to thank everybody for coming out and supporting this great debate that we're having tonight. My name is Oscar Saldana.
It's good to have you out tonight. I apologize for my voice. You never see the mic. For some reason, it just has affected me. My name is Bill Lee.
Good evening and welcome to Ledge District 2. I am Heather Jackson and this is my Ledge District.
Good evening. Can I just show a hand how many are first-time delegates? Thank you very much. And thank you very much for being here. My name is Lauren Rieson. We look forward to meeting with you and discussing issues tonight. Thank you.
My name is Carlton Bowen. I'm currently serving as an American Fork City Councilman. And it's Carlton B. for Commissioner B. So, to help you remember, since there's a lot, just remember CB CB.
I just want to thank you all for being here. This is a great honor to speak before you and to see the great service and the diligence of each one of you as you do your homework and listen to us. So, thank you for being here. And I'm Casey Allen.
Thank you for being here. My name is David Atchison.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and begin here on the left. If you will restate your name, usually at the beginning of questions to remind the delegates what your name is, that will be helpful. Our first question of the night is, what is your philosophy on the proper role of government?
Oscar Saldana. I think government is great as long as they represent people right. They're not here to tell us what to do. They're not here to guide our life. I think we're old enough to make our own decisions. So, I think they're here to represent us in the best way that they can. Not as a personal interest, but as a Utah County citizen. I think that it's something that needs to be done better. It's something that we need to work on. There's a lot of issues that could get better. And so, government sometimes has too much control over our lives. Sometimes, they think what's best for us, and I don't agree with that. We're only here to serve the people, to represent the people, and to do the best job that we can.
As I look at the problem role of government as it protects our life, our liberty, and our pursuit of happiness, and the fourth one in there talks about our property rights. And then protecting those property rights, which is essential... Property rights are essential, especially as a county commissioner, as we look at that, and how property rights are affected. So, the proper role of government, government always tends to want to expand by its just its nature only. It wants to expand. And we, as elected officials, and you, as the people, it's necessary if needed that you elect individuals that look at the proper role of government and help to keep it within its bounds. And then as the people and the citizens in this county, you hold the elected people, speak to them, fire them, and let them know how you feel it should go. And let them know that you're looking at the proper role. You want them to fill that role and fill it right, do it well.
Thank you. I'm Heather Jackson. I believe the proper role of government is to protect our rights, most importantly, that right to own property. But also, it's also to provide some of those essential services that we do need. We need to be safe and secure. And so, I think it's incredibly important, incredibly important, that it provides for our public safety needs. And then also, we also need to provide for our transportation needs. As a county, I think it's important that we're involved in that process and that we help to maintain the safety and the quality of life that we have without going to government in a vague fashion.
My name is Lauren Rieson. I'm remembering for Mike Lee that works. The proper role of government, as has been said, is to protect the rights of all the people, all of the citizens, as pertaining to the state constitution and the constitution of the United States. The proper role of government is really, I get asked all the time, "What are you going to do?" I didn't really want to turn that around and say, "What are you doing?" Yes, you are, but at least you should be. You need to be involved in this process, not only now, but in the process all the way to making sure that your voice is heard, that you're standing up for what you believe in, and letting us know what we need to do to protect your rights. Thank you.
My name is Carlton Bowen, and I believe the proper role of government is to protect rights, including the right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, property, including life within the womb. I also want to protect marriage. Marriage is more than laws, or the laws we have about marriage. Marriage is an institution that was instituted by God from the beginning. Every person alive in this world has a father and a mother, whether they know them or not. And that's, marriage laws are based on natural law. When people of opposite genders come together in a union, then a child, a third person can result from that. Same-gender marriage will never be that naturally. You'll never have a union of same genders that results in a third person. And that's important legally, because we have to decide legally how we're going to treat that third person. And that's one of the reasons that government does have a role in marriage, and I think it's important we stand up for this now. Thank you. CB for Carlton Bowen for Commissioner B.
I'm Casey Allen. The proper role of government is first and foremost to protect your rights, your property rights, to keep you safe and secure. The proper role of government also, I believe, is to maintain infrastructure that will keep you safe and protected. As I serve you, I will maintain infrastructure. I will work to keep your property rights and your personal rights protected. I believe in government, the government should be less invasive, that we should keep property taxes low. That is the role of government, to spend carefully and efficiently and effectively your property taxes. Thank you. I'm Casey Allen.
The proper role of government is limited, and that puts the onus on you and me. Because it is within our purview, it is within our power to be the ones to limit the extent that government operates under. My role as a commissioner will be to provide enough government, just enough, to get the job done so that private industry and private citizens can move in and do the things that private citizens do and that we are empowered to do by the Constitution, both of the United States and by the state of Utah. So, it is a responsibility that each of us has to vet candidates and to vote for those people in whatever position to understand that the role of government is limited. And I'm the candidate that you should vote for, because I understand that issue, and that's what I support. Thank you. I'm David Atchison.
Our next question will be, in preparation for running for Commissioner of this county, what are your prior experiences that helped qualify you for Commissioner? Have you attended any of the Commissioners' meetings or met with the mayors and city councils in the county so that you are aware of the issues throughout the county? I'll start here with Bill Lee.
Yes, I've been to a lot of Commission meetings, not just even in just this county, but also around the state. I had the opportunity to work for Senator Mike Lee, and in doing so, as his Deputy State Director, I went throughout the state talking about, talking with the Commissioners, with the mayors, about issues that are happening in their areas, and I have vast experience in dealing with the different issues that we see. One of the issues that I want to bring up is land. I had the opportunity, and many times going around this county, and out here in this area in particular, talking with Juan Paulman, who is the Director of BLM. And with him, we looked at the map and we noticed that there's a lot of BLM land out here in this area that is going to cause problems with growth or potential growth in the future. And in talking with him, I said, "What are we going to do about that land?" And he said to me over and over, "I'd like to get rid of that land. We don't need that land. BLM doesn't manage that land well. Let's see if we can get it back into the hands of the state or the county." So, with that, I... Is that time? Okay, there you go. I'm Bill Lee. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Heather Jackson, and my experience, I've spent the last six years here in Eagle Mountain as the Mayor. Two years before that, I served as a City Council member. During that time, I've spent a lot of time getting to know the other mayors throughout the county, and spent lots of time talking with them. And as I've been gearing up for this campaign, I've gone and visited with several of them to understand better the issues that they're experiencing within their communities. I've also spent time as the Chair of our Transportation Committee for the last two years, so I have a good understanding of what's going on there. I've been attending our county Commission meetings, and there are some things that I think need to be changed in those meetings. And first and foremost, I think that you all need to be able to see them. So, if we can start with video, you know, taking video and posting those to YouTube, I think that's a great way to start being more transparent and open with our county government. I've seen a lot of things, and I'm excited for the opportunity to make changes and to serve you. I'm Heather Jackson.
I'll tell you. No, not to touch it anymore. My experience comes from the business world. I have basically spent 40 years in business. I've been hired by a lot of companies to be what's called a troubleshooting CEO. That's a person that's hired to figure out where the business is at, figure out where they want to be, and build the proper long-term strategy to get them from where they are to where they want to be. I've been very successful at that. I've also owned four of my own businesses here in Utah County. I actually retired four years ago from business and thought I was going to rest, and my wife and family said, "No, you're not." And they basically said, "You need to use those experiences to give back to the rest of the community." I have been to the county Commissioner meetings. I've also met with economic development areas all over the state. I've also talked with mayors and city councilmen. I think I understand what the issues are and will continue to do that. Heather's right, we need to have the citizens more involved, but I don't necessarily want to record meetings. I want to record town hall meetings before the meeting. I want you to have input long before we have to make a decision. I'd like to see those in webcasts or in other types of forums so the people, the citizens, can be involved in the discussion and in the process. I'm Lauren Rieson. Thank you.
I'm Carlton Bowen. So, I'm currently serving as an American Fork City Councilman. I have a record of voting against tax and fee increases, of voting against more debt. All of the same issues that exist at the county largely exist at the city level. I'm familiar with land use planning, approving developments, standing up for individual property rights, planning. And I want, at the county level, to also vote against tax increases and against fee increases. I want to stop adding debt to our county and to our county citizens. We have enough, and we can meet our needs without adding debt. As we have growth, our tax base grows. We have more sales tax revenue. We have more property tax revenue. The county and cities charge impact and connection fees. We get revenue from that. And it's actually the private developers putting in the roads, the sidewalks, the curb and gutter. And so, our existing system grows as we grow, which is wonderful. We don't need to raise taxes. We don't need to raise fees. We don't need to add debt.
I'm Casey Allen, and I have worked closely in the Commission, with the Commissioners, every day for the last three and a half years. I am in the Commission office. I have seen the day-to-day operations of the Commission. I am familiar with its operations, and I'm familiar with the issues facing the county. I speak about the issues facing the county every day with Commissioner Doug Whitney and the other Commissioners. I have attended frequently the Commission meeting on Tuesday morning, and I too feel that we need to make that meeting more accessible. I also feel that we need to have meetings before that meeting so that you do have input. I have also been engaged in, I have three seasons now of budget discussions, so I know a little bit about the budget and the budget process. I believe we can do better there. I have special insight into what can be changed in the Commission office. I believe Commissioners need to be more accountable and more engaged in the budget discussions. They need to be accountable for the bottom line of the budget. They need to hold their department heads accountable to the bottom line of the budget. I have been there. I have attended mayor's meetings, and thank you very much. I'm Casey Allen.
Relationships and commitment is what this question is all about. And that is, does do you, as an individual candidate, have the relationships that are important to understand what the issues are that matter to those of us who live in this county? As a member of the Provo City Council, I served as a legislator and know what it means to vote for laws, vote them up, vote them down, draft laws. I've attended county Commission meetings. I've attended other cities, city council meetings. And all of these, during all of these experiences, has been an opportunity for me to establish relationships and to understand what we, as citizens in this county, want. When you look to vote for a Commissioner for this position, I urge you to look to the person that has relationships that are lasting and that mean something to those others so that differences can be made in the county things.
Oscar Saldana. What I bring to the table, the reason why I'm running, I've actually worked for Utah County for 25 years. I was a land surveyor. I worked under a great guy, Clyde Nager. Clyde was really big into parks, trails, and a lot of areas for the community. I think that's, those were great projects. I've also been a business guy. We've had a lot of issues with small businesses with the cities. I have actually gone through City Council with Provo and Orme to make some changes. Most of our ordinances are 20 and 30 years old and do not accommodate businesses. So, we need, I have made some changes. A lot of people, you know, were happy for that because it benefited them. And so, three items that I'm very concerned, land rights, water rights, and taxes. I think that's something that I will take very serious and work very hard and accommodate and control the economic growth. Thank you, Oscar.
Okay, this will be a one-minute question. What is your opinion on how many Commissioners there should be in Utah County? Currently, there are three. Should we change to a mayor-council form of county government or keep this one and keep it the same? I'm reading your questions that you sent in, so if you notice that I kind of go on, I apologize.
Thank you. I'm Heather Jackson. Yes, we currently have a three-Commissioner form of government, which means that all of our Commissioners are at large. For the last several years, I live in Eagle Mountain. I've lived here for 15 years, and in the amount of time that I've lived here, I've never had somebody that represents my area of the county and a lot of your areas of this county as well. I do recognize we have people that have come from very far away too, and so, please know that as of the way things are right now, I would represent everybody, and I'm happy to do that. But I do think that we need to review what's going on in our county. With the great amount of growth that we have had, we need to be prepared for that, and we need to find ways that we do represent all of our population. We are very different in the very different areas that we have. North County is high growth. South County is not. And it's okay, and it's appropriate that we are different, but we do need to find ways to represent each other.
That's the last time I'm going to try that one. There are currently three Commissioners right now. They are at large. They basically are supposed to represent all areas of the county. As county Commissioners, they do their best to be able to do that. However, we are not only getting larger, we're going to double in size over the next couple, two decades. And that's going to become even more increasingly difficult for county Commissioners to really represent all of the areas. We need to look at these other forms of government and probably go to five Commissioners and an executive. That person would be the management, while the others would be the legislative. And that's something that we need to look at. Other counties have done it. We need to examine other counties. We need to find out what we need to do. But the system is currently three, and of course, the final vote will be up to you as to what you want and what you want to have as representation on the county. Thank you.
My name's Carlton Bowen. So, I'm not opposed to changing the form that we currently have, although it's not like my burning issue that it's not what I'm all about at the county level. So, on a principle basis, I think the more representation we have, the better. And so, having more people than just three, I think, is a positive. And also, from a principle level, whenever you combine power, different powers, like right now, we have the three branches of government to a degree combined in the Commissioner, that's a little bit dangerous, and so, I'm not opposed to separating those out. On the flip side, you have county-wide representation now, and it's efficient, but you think that there's more important things than efficiency though. What I'm concerned about is protecting marriage. I think that's extremely important to do. We have states in New Mexico and Colorado that surround us where, and I'd like to extend my time on this one, which I have the option of doing. We have neighboring states where their rights of conscience are under attack. In New Mexico, if you have a photography business that's morally opposed to photographing same-gender weddings, and now they're faced with the decision, because the courts in New Mexico ruled against them, of either violating their conscience or losing their business. They're being fined like $6,000 a week. Look, we came to America for religious freedom 400 years ago. When we have to choose between following our conscience or being compelled by government to violate our conscience, that's a problem. And we need to wake up and stand up for what our beliefs are, and especially for our religious freedoms and our freedoms of conscience. Freedom of religion, freedom of speech, freedom of the press.
Okay, now I'm having a problem with the microphone. Okay. What just happened, every candidate has two times they can extend their answer time, about 30 seconds. So, that's what just happened, so that way everybody understands. Thanks, Casey.
I am absolutely for considering other options for representation of you. The Commissioners, there are currently three, and as I have observed, the county Commissioners, they wear many hats. They have many responsibilities. As the county grows, those responsibilities for representing each of you will grow with the population. I do believe we need to extend the Commission to five or seven. I believe, I also believe strongly that doesn't mean growing government. That means reducing Commissioners' salaries and thinking about the staff, the support staff that works with them, and redoing that. I absolutely would consider many options and discuss with you the options for representing you so that every area of the county is properly represented. Thank you.
So, this is a thinking person's question, because we'd like to extend representation throughout the county. However, it increases costs, and I stand for no increase in taxes. I won't vote for an increase in taxes. So, to move from three to five, which would be great, requires that we, as a county, as a county family, come together in referendum and determine, do we want to have the additional expense that comes along with this? Now, the other opportunity that we have is, as we put this to a referendum, is to think these things through and determine as an entire county whether or not that's exactly what we want to have happen. So, I would propose that we move to five, that we make three of those regional positions, south, middle, north, and maybe two at large. I'm David Atchison.
Oscar Saldana. There are currently three Commissioners right now. I think that because of our growth here in our county, we definitely need more brains out there. We need more, five people that think better than three. I think that we can keep the three full times, and we can do two part times to kind of be mediators in a lot of these decisions that have been taken by the county. I have attended some of these equalization meetings where I see a lot of land disputes, and I see a lot of farmers that come in with problems with their properties. And they walk out, and they're very disappointed simply because the Commissioners could not help them out. They could not support the issues that they're having with their lands. And so, I think we should have two more guys, you know, to mediate some of these issues. I'm always for a pay cut for what exists right now. We can, you know, use that same money, use the same budget to pay the other two part-time guys.
I'm Bill Lee. I don't have any problem with looking at this issue and seeing what will work best for us. That's the beauty that we have when living in this country, is that we get to select what type of government that we live under. Across the United States, you'll see all kinds of different forms when it comes to county Commissioners. In some states, don't even have county Commissioners. We have different forms here in our own state, where we have a county mayor and then a council. So, I have no problem at all at looking at it. I would just like to see us go through the proper process of that and educate us on all the issues that pertain to that one issue and make it work the best that we feel would work for us as a people.
Okay, you will have one minute to answer these two questions. How long have you been a Republican and why? Who do you identify with in national politics and why?
That's not fair. I swear I'm not doing it. I'm going to take my time on this one right now. The reason I want to take this time is because if I say A and above and a few other words, you'll know that I'm not originally from this country. I was born in Canada. I've lived in this country for 40 years however, and I've been 40 years as a Republican. I wish that all of you had an opportunity to go through the process that I had to go through to become a citizen of this country. The reason for that is because when you basically decide to become a citizen, you not only have to learn about this country, you have to swear an oath. And when you swear an oath, at least in my family, that means something. And when I swore an oath to this country and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, I knew what that meant to me and to my family. So, I've been a Republican all of my life that I've been here in the United States. As far as somebody that I look up to, I actually look up to Mitt Romney. I think the things that he was saying about what's happening with our federal government right now are coming true. I think he told us that we needed to watch out for Putin and for the Russians. That was the biggest threat that we had, and we're starting to see some of those things come to pass. So, I guess I identify with Mitt Romney. I saw the movie on him. I thought it was wonderful. Thank you very much for your time.
I'm Carlton Bowen. I've been to those citizenship swearing-in ceremonies, and they are moving when they revoke their rights to any other country and swear allegiance to the United States. I would identify with Mike Lee, and the reason why, and I've been a Republican since I was 16, when I helped start a Republican club in high school. But the reason why I would identify with Mike Lee is because he's willing to stand up for what he believes in. And one of those things he stood against was Obamacare, and I wish he'd had more support because we could have prevailed. We had the authority in the House to prevail if we would have had the support from the leadership of the Republican Party. But Obamacare is an example of something that forces people to go against their conscience. You have, it requiring people to provide abortions. Well, I told you I believe in protecting life. You know, most of the country opposes abortion. You can't even find nurses hardly anymore working abortion clinics. Who wants to go to work and kill babies every day, stop abating heart? Well, Obamacare requires employers and organizations, any organization, with maybe some exemptions, but why are there exemptions? It should be across the board. We shouldn't be compelled against our conscience. And so, Obamacare does that. It forces business to provide something that's against their conscience, and it's wrong. That's why, one of the reasons I identify with Mike Lee.
Thank you. I'm Casey Allen. I have been registered Republican for four years. I have been a registered independent all of my life. I identify with many and listen to many voices. I am a moderate Republican. I believe in listening to all the voices, bringing all the voices to the table. I feel strongly that I am a fiscally conservative. I believe that we must keep taxes low.
I believe that we must keep taxes low and that government should be less rather than more. I, I have supported many ideas of Mitt Romney. I do like some of his ideas, but I have listened to many voices and I, I just, I'm not sure how, what to say, except that I have been one that will listen to many voices and, and absolutely represent you and keep government low and taxes low.
I've been a Republican since I was eight. So over the past 20 years, I've had a really good time. I, and I, and I identify with, with two. Reagan, because he's the first president that I could vote for. Was great. And Paul Ryan. I think Paul Ryan is articulate, I think he's smart, and I think he understands that the underlying challenges in our country can be solved with commitment to moral principles and a sound understanding of fiscal policy and a far-reaching view into what we can do as citizens to provide for our needs, to have limited government, to allow government to fulfill that limited role, and in addition to that, being able to assure that what we have moving forward is going to be sound financially for the rest of our lives and the lives of our children and grandchildren.
Well, I've been a Republican since I was seven. Many of us don't realize how good we have it in this country. We are very lucky and very blessed to have the freedom to express our opinions, our ideas, and our faith. We cannot forget those who have got us here, the people that are, that have fought for us and the ones that keep fighting to this day for us. The reason I'm running, I believe in freedom and justice for everybody. I think it's, it's a, it's a great right that we have in this country, we need to defend it, we need to keep it, and we need, we need to keep going with it. There are some issues that need to be resolved and we can do better.
Well, I've been a Republican since I was, my, I, I gotta tell you a little story about my family. So I, my mom is from southern Utah and she's a strong Republican. She's always been a Republican, her whole life. My dad is from Rhode Island and he's been a stubborn independent his whole life, that's what he tells me all the time. So from that, from those two, those two groups, I learned from my mother the importance of, of family and faith and independence from my father. He always would say, you know, it's time to throw all the bums out, you know, that kind of rhetoric he used all the time. And so I, I, that's, that's what I learned on my, my, my basis when I came to it. I, I have been a Republican my whole life and I identify with Mike Lee. If I could, could I take the next one for a second? And, and the reason why I say Senator Mike Lee is because I call him my, my Senator, not just a Senator, my Senator. When I had the opportunity to, to visit him, meet him for the first time about five years ago, we're not related, by the way, although we do share the last, same last name. I met him five years ago, he spoke the language that I understood. He spoke how I felt about government. Not just small government, but limited government. Small government can be a king or a queen, but limited government. My name is Phil Lee. I appreciate my vote. Thank you.
I'm Heather Jackson and I was born into a Republican Party household in a Democratic state. And my first stuffed animal, believe it or not, was an elephant. It wasn't a teddy bear. And so I have this love of elephants and have it my entire life. If you've ever been in my office, you would have seen my collection. So as soon as I could register to vote, I've been a Republican registered for 25 years. And I've been active in the Republican Party of Utah County for the last 14 years, as, as a county delegate, as a state delegate, as a precinct chair. I most identify with Congressman Jason Chaffetz, because he works hard, he shows up when he needs to show up, and by golly, when we're having a problem, he's here to help us and he fights for what we need. And I want to be more like him and serve you as a county commissioner.
Okay, we're going to have three more one-minute questions. Two years ago, a discussion took place about the sewage smell in Pleasant Grove. Is this still, yes, is this still an issue? And if so, how would you handle the problem?
That's a great question, since our city's impacted by that. So as far as I know, it's still an issue. It's kind of seasonal. Yeah, I see them smelling more in the summer when the wind's blowing the right way. And I live pretty far away from a sewage treatment plant, I'm up, passed up by the temple. How would I deal with it at the county level? So the Tepanoga Sewage District is a special district organized under the county. And from what I understand, that district agreed not to have the smell problem. And also from what I understand, what's causing the problem is composting. Well, to me, it seems like that's kind of an easy solution and there's probably several solutions. One solution is to just ship the material somewhere else and compost it where there's not people and developing burgeoning communities around. Another solution would be to maybe put some greenhouses over the, the compost that seal in the odor. And I'm sure there's other solutions to, and it's some, certainly something that can be addressed.
So I have been out to the site of TS and the Tepanoga, Tepanoga Special Service District. I have toured the facility. I do, have seen the issues that they deal with, and yes, it is an issue, especially in the summer. But it's an issue that the commission has tried to be involved in. They, a couple of years ago, tried to place, change the board so that there were more voices that could speak about the issue and the commission was asked to not be involved. They have the ability to place just three people on that board. I would encourage more communication between the four cities involved and the board so that we can address that issue. Having said that, a lot has been done to enclose that, the headwaters and to reduce that smell. It will cost money to ship the compost somewhere else, to get banned somewhere else, but I would encourage more conversation and discussion on how to solve that problem.
Part of the question is, is there a problem? The answer is yes, there's absolutely a problem. And it's a problem for the county, because it's a problem for those that live, for thousands and thousands of people that live within there. It affects property value. And that's a problem, because it's prime real estate, we've got some great development opportunities there that private businesses can build, but that they are limited because of the smell. So there has been thinker pointing. And what I will do as commissioner is step up and take responsibility from a county perspective to work to solve the problem. Do I know how to solve that problem? I don't. As a county commissioner, will I explore all of the options so that we can solve the problem? And I know sewage, when I see it, when I see it, I've been in politics for a lot of years, but I think that there is an opportunity for the county to step up and to take responsibility for that in terms of solving the problem.
I actually live in Pleasant Grove, so I'm very aware of this issue. I think it's something that definitely we need to look into. We need to meet with some of these city mayors, some of the city commission and work something out. It's, it's a big problem, especially in the summertime. I think that we need to plan things better for some of our growth here in the county. That's a perfect example, because 10 years ago, we didn't have that problem. So obviously, there's been a lot of growth, there's, with growth, there's more problems. And so that's something that we really need to work on. You can't just shut it down and be done with it. So I, I would meet with some of these city representatives and make some changes for that.
This is an issue, but in talking just frankly about this issue, there's 10 cities involved in this, on this, and they all appoint one person before. Then there's three from the, from the Special Service District. They're, they're independent board, they're set up by the county commission, but they, they set them up independently. So when you talk about county commission going through and having all these ties into it, they're independent of the county commission. Now, there was, there was a proposal, I think it was a few years ago, in which they said, let's go through, let's elect the county commissioners, appoint those seats. But can you see the problem? There's only three cities that are being affected by this, Pleasant Grove, Linden, and Barrack and Fort. And so if they, if the county commission goes and appoints these seats, they're not going to appoint them all from one city, they're going to appoint them just like we have it now, from each city that's out there. The other issue is, is if we want to move that, the taxes increase. And where do we move it to? Over here? I don't, I don't think, it's, it's where it's at. It's an issue that I think we need to kind of have to take a look at and work through.
Thank you. I'm Heather Jackson. I'm aware of this problem. Eagle Mountain is a part of this Tepanoga, Tepanoga Special Service District and has been for quite a long time. So has Saratoga Springs. And we discussed what these issues are. Yes, we are not affected by the smell, but we are affected, because anything that's done there, any changes that are made, increase the cost of what's going on. And that in turn increases your bill if you're in the area where you're serviced by Tepanoga Sewer District. In Eagle Mountain, we have three different sewer districts, basically. And so it's very complicated to deal with. As we're looking at the problem, we just need to look at the best solutions. And the solution that was originally pointed out to me was like Bill said, let's ship it out here. And I said, no way. We already have our own sewer treatment plant out here and we don't need more. But we do need to find some solutions. We've got to work through the district and deal with them appropriately.
I'm very aware of this problem. I've actually studied it quite a bit and I've actually spent time out of the facility and understand the issue. And I'd like to be able to take about five minutes and explain it to you, but I've been doing 50 seconds. The real issue is that we mix the sewer with compost, I mean with the green waste. It has to be turned every 21 days, it creates an odor. We're losing approximately $50 million in lost revenue from taxes and from businesses that would come in there by all estimations. We make $300,000 on the process of being able to turn this into waste product. It needs to be moved. We're going to grow, outgrow the facility, you mentioned anyway, not move. But we need to get somebody to come in and haul it away and we can talk more about it when we have a little more time. But thank you very much.
Okay, this one's going to only be a 30-second question. So yeah, real fast. Do you support or oppose the proposed bridge across Utah Lake between the west and east sides? Go ahead, Carlton. Casey.
It, it's a nice idea that perhaps someday, when the population can support that bridge. The question is, who is going to pay for that bridge? I understand it's an $82 million bridge. Who is going to pay for that? Perhaps in the future, we can consider that, but no, that's not something I would address right now. That is not where our transportation needs lie at this time.
Today, I oppose it. Maybe tomorrow, we as a family in this county will support it. And the point is, is that with me as your commissioner, there are items which are big-ticket items, which change the, the face of our county, which will not be decided at the commission level, and with me as a commissioner, but which will be put to a vote, which is put to a referendum, so that the issues can be vetted and thoroughly brought out before us as public and that we can then make informed decisions.
I actually support that. I think it's something that would benefit greatly out here in this area. It would cut your traveling time. The shortest point from point A to point B across that lake is 6.1 miles. The lake has an average of about eight feet, it's very shallow. So it would be a great benefit for this area, would make this land a lot more valuable. I think they have talked about a toll station where you can charge a couple of dollars per vehicle, it would still save gas money. It's something to look into the future. So definitely it's something for, you know, in the years to come.
I'll speak fast on this one. There's, there's wants, there's needs, and then there's paid for. And every time we look at those, we have to analyze where we're at. Everyone, we want it, but do we need it? And how's it going to be paid for? Two of those things have been talked about over and over. Paid for, it's going to be privately funded. We all want something like that. I'm in favor of doing preservation of corridors if we need to, so we have it, have that available. But at this time, right now, I don't think we quite have the need necessary to bring it across.
We need the bridge. We have two ways to get east and west in Utah County. It's Highway 6 down in Santaquin and Highway 73 out here, and that's it. We need the bridge. Now, we may not have the best plan yet, but we have to have that bridge. And we have to figure out what the best plan is and the correct process for implementing it.
There's a lot of issues surrounding the bridge. It's a more complex issue than we're talking about. We need an overall plan to be able to take care of this. Who owns the lake? Certain amount of water over, certain levels owned by Salt Lake County, certain amount under, and certain levels owned by Utah County. So there, the state owns the bottom of the lake, federal lands around the outside, there's invasive flora, there's carp, there's all kinds of other issues on there. Do we need transportation? Absolutely. We have to have it. Do we need a bridge across there? It's going to happen someday. We just need to figure out how to bring all those people together to solve the problem.
My name's Carlton Bowen. I would like to see a privately funded tunnel. I've lived in Virginia and they have tunnels going under the ocean for miles and miles. And I think it would make a lot of sense, maybe have a bridge that goes out just a very short distance and then it goes into a tunnel, which actually probably wouldn't be that expensive considering how shallow the lake is. We haven't had much, and by privately funded, I mean maybe the county or state, whoever owns the land, we work with them and they do a lease, maybe a hundred-year lease. But then the person that's funding that is taking all the risk and it's not increasing our taxes.
Okay, this is going to be our final question, and if the candidates would include their closing comments as well, this will be a minute and a half. What is your record on bonding, if you have one? And would, what would your position be on the county bonding of various issues?
90 seconds, is that right? And including, including our votes in standard? Thank you. If I choose to buy a vowel, can I? I have your time.
You can add your time if you haven't done so yet.
I, as a legislator, I have not bonded. Here's my policy on bonding, and that is that bonding is an additional tax, no matter what you call it. And I won't vote for taxes as commissioner. But I will allow for bonds to go before us. I keep talking about the, the family, the county family. So if there's something that we need to bond for in the future, as we're anticipating staying ahead of the curve on crime, for example, we need renovations to the jail or we need a new jail, that's fine. I'll make sure that those issues come before us so that we can determine, and again, duke it out, talk about the costs, the benefits, and determine how much it will cost down to the penny for each and every of us as citizens. That's what I'll do, is when there are needs for bonds, I won't be making that final decision. We all will be making that final decision. The reason that you should vote for me for this position is because I have the experience, the breadth, the depth in all three of these areas we've talked about, executive, judicial, legislative. I've been a legislator. I have had judicial experience as a trial attorney. I've been in the jails with my clients. I understand what it means to argue in front of judges. I understand, and I'm going to buy my vowel. I understand what it means to actually be working with the, with the court system. And I understand that we have to have sheriffs, we have to have policing force so that we can get those bad guys and then put them in the jail. The other one is executive. So as a software executive, I've dealt with multimillion-dollar budgets. I used to work for Microsoft. I understand what it means to hold people accountable and to parse those out. I'm not intimidated or daunted by those kinds of budgets. So that's why, in part, you should vote for me, David Atchison. Thank you.
Bonding is not for me. A bond is a line of credit and I don't want to have a debt for my grandkids and my great-grandkids and so forth. I think whatever can be afforded, whatever projects, whatever the county can do, you know, to stay away from... whatever projects, whatever the county can do, you know, stay away from bonding. Bonding is not, it's not a good way to go. I have four wonderful children. I grew up in the Promoria area, and I worked for Utah County for 25 years as a land surveyor. I was involved with a lot of these trails, parks, and camping areas, and I think we need more of that. I'm retired now. I have a very successful business that I've been running for five years, so I can do things right as far as business. So county's part of business. So I ask you guys tonight to think things over, do your research, pick the best person that's going to do the best job and represent you in the best way possible. We need somebody that's going to work hard for you. We don't need self-interest people. We need people that are interested in you, in the citizens of the county. So let's keep this county great. Let's keep going, and let's pick the right people and put the right people in office. Thank you.
Bonding is a tool that can't be used, can't be used by government. I don't have a record of voting. I haven't been in office to vote for a bond or against a bond, but I do have a record of fighting against improper bonding in my own city and in the bonds. So bond, there's a couple of different types of bonding. There's an MVA bond, or there's a GEO bond. If you look at the MVA bond, that's something that stays on the records. It stays on, it's like a permanent tax increase. You've got to be careful with those. They use those because a lot of times, they want to get around the people's voice with it. And then the GEO bond, GEO bond goes before the people, and the people are going to go on. So I think that as we look at the different types of bonding that's out there, let's be really careful about what we're doing with bonding, because it is a form of tax issue. But the GEO bond is one that comes to an end. It has a conclusion, like there's a project that we want to fund, that needs to, that we need to have in the county or in the city. Last, I'll be closing, on my closing statements. I have been, I've been in this county my whole adult life. You see me around, I see a lot of friends, a lot of friends that I associate, I associate with. And I've rubbed shoulders with you, and we have worked together to solve a lot of the problems, to fight for limited government, limited government so that it's for the people, not for us. Thank you. My name is Phil Lee. Welcome.
I do have a track record, and it does involve bonding. In Eagle Mountain City, we had a need for infrastructure. And so when we had a need for infrastructure, dealing with our water, our sewer, our electric, our gas companies, then yes, we did vote for bonding. But I didn't always vote. I was the mayor and didn't have a vote sometimes too. But I did bring that forward. I believe when we are dealing with our infrastructure, then it can be appropriate, as long as it fits within where we already have our taxes. I don't want to raise taxes to have to do a bond. I don't think that we should do bonding for things like a convention center. But when we're dealing with our transportation issues and potentially public safety, I will look at that as an option. Now, my closing remarks. I've spent the last eight years in government here in Eagle Mountain. I have a record, a proven track record. I am committed to doing the job. I don't qualify. I have the relationships that are necessary to be able to work with the various different mayors throughout the county, with the other elected officials within our county, as well as our legislative leaders. I ask for your vote. Again, my name is Heather Jackson. Thank you.
My name is Lauren Pearson. I think one of the things, I'll answer that question by basically teaching a principle. The principle is that our government, our county government, needs to be more open, accessible to the public. We need to put issues up long before the decisions are made. We need to put them on websites and have people be able to see what's going on. We have to have more accessibility to these issues so that you have an opportunity to put input into them. As it relates to a bond, if we have to have that type of an issue, you need to be the ones that are going to come to us and say, "Here's my concerns. Here's my thought." I want you looking over my shoulder all the time and making sure that I'm doing the types of things that you want to have done within this county. That's what I feel we need to do in order to make the county successful. My biggest concern is that we're going to grow. We're going to double in size, and we don't have the infrastructure necessary. And I learned in business a long time ago that you have to have the growth and the infrastructure very close together. If I have a thousand orders and only can ship 20, I'm going to be out of business very shortly. So the key is, we have to keep that infrastructure and growth. We need to do that through economic development and bringing the right kinds of businesses to support the right kinds of areas. So if it's agricultural, we want to have agricultural areas with agricultural businesses to support those. We do not want to raise taxes. Taxes, we have plenty of money in this county. We don't need to raise taxes. We need to be able to run our government efficiently. I'm going to take my extra time. We need to run efficiently. We need to be able to figure out the right types of things that we need to do in the county, and we need to do it together. I want your help, and I hope that you'll vote for me, because I want to preserve the quality of life that we have in this county. My five children and my grandchildren have all grown up here, and I want to preserve the quality of life. My name is Lauren Pearson, and I hope you'll vote for me for county commissioner, seat B. Thank you.
My name's Carlton Bowden. Look, I was put into office opposing bond. I definitely have a track record against that. Our city, which is a city of less than 30,000, was over, is over $56 million in debt. And we were trying to borrow 20 million more. Debt service is the single largest budget category in our city. It's bigger than every other budget category. We pay more, and that's without the 20 million extra, by the way, which failed, thankfully. Our debt is, takes a half million more than it costs to run our police department for the entire year. So I definitely am opposed to bonding. I don't want any more debt at the county level. We have enough debt. We have tons of debt at the county level. The, I want to talk about what I believe in, which is, the state has done a great thing with Amendment Three, which defined marriage. And the state has passed laws. They've created basically a bubble at the state level. And what we see is a few judicial activist judges who have an agenda. It's not a coincidence that these rulings are coming about all at the same time, and these people are going against the voice of the people. And we have a single low-level, unelected federal judge who heard one case with one plaintiff and one defendant in Salt Lake County, who took it upon himself to overrule the voice of the people, our elected House members, our elected Senate members, our elected governor, our state constitution, and our state law. And I'd like to use my second time to extend 30 seconds. And that is criminal that we let them do that. And thankfully, there were seven counties that did not. So what can we do at the county level? As we saw, the state's done a great thing, but they need backup at the county level. And the counties do have a role in this. The county commission has both legislative and executive authority. And I would use the legislative authority of the county commission to simply pass a measure saying that within our county, within Utah County, we are not going to issue marriage licenses to same-gendered unions. And if they are issued through fraud, then they're null and void. Carlton Lee for Commission B.
Casey Allen, I too believe that we must keep our debt low. I am, of course, for not bonding without putting the vote to you, the public. I would have voted against the convention center. We must consider carefully what we are bonding for. There are necessary things to bond for, but excessive bonding, I am against. Debt, I am against, and the vote should go to the public. To address why I should be your county commissioner, I have been involved in the day-to-day, engaged in the day-to-day practices of the commission office for the last three and a half years. I have seen what it takes to be an effective county commissioner. It takes hard work. It takes rolling up your sleeves and going to work to represent you. I have seen that the commission office is a board of three working together. It is not a singular executive. It is three working together. The ability to collaborate, to cooperate, to bring a group together and move a project forward is crucial to the county commission form of government. I have insight into what can be changed in the county government, as I have observed in the last three and a half years. I have experience. I know the issues. There's a huge learning curve. When you come into the office in that first year, I have jumped over that learning curve and have a unique ability and unique preparation to serve you. This is a public trust. I am here to serve you and will serve you with my sleeves rolled up, prepared and accountable. For every meeting and every responsibility I have, I will serve you. Thank you. Please vote for Casey Allen, CB.
One more round of applause for our incredible candidates.